Everybody, you've got five minutes.
Next one's slow.
Okay.
I'm saying, I don't think. I can come back in if you'd like.
Well, it looks like everybody's here and ready to go.
Get her going, Dan.
Batter up. Mr. Cale? Mr. Patterson?
I'm here with this poor Adam.
Low water bridge in Little Lillie. I've never heard of this project. What's going on down there?
You're supposed to start this up with the prior group screwing this up.
I say that to Dan.
I say that to Steve.
Steve's here.
I thought he was meaning us.
This is long overdue as far as an update. There has been some work going on in the background for about 18 months. So what I would like to do is I have three packets of information here. And it isn't really... It's a condensed version. This small report shows the picture of the existing bridge pretty much today. So what's going on here is this project, speaking from this memo here, this project originally became a capital project in 2003, 2004 here for the county before I came here. The bridge has been in a problem for many years even before that. What you can see here, there's pictures of when it was originally constructed with the WPA program back in 1938. So it's approaching almost eight years. The project has gone through many challenges here recently. So I just want to highlight some of the things. And I did even condense the version that you have down here fundamentally as far as the project's history. So we had a feasibility study done recommending the replacement of the bridge. The feasibility study recommended a 50-year design storm that it should pass. The study was funded by state and county, 80-20. Then after the study, Wilson T. Ballard continued. They got notice to proceed with the design for the project in 2006. Preliminary design was submitted in October 2008. And with these engineering plans, we also have environmental permitting stages of the project. It goes through the whole NEPA process guided by federal law. And so we had Valen Historical Trust as MHT. We had a Phase One archaeological investigation December 2008. Shortly in 2009, we actually changed the design storm to a 25-year design alternative. So we have redesign efforts associated with that. Skipping down ahead there, after the redesign, there was a 75% design submitted made in 2009. Right away, initiation started in 2010. Stormwater management starts in 2010. And why these are lagging behind is usually what happens is state highway ends up feeling comfortable with the design of the bridge before everything else really starts to gain speed on that level of job. After that, things really got bogged down. Some of the different findings out there which are back in this report, there's some historically significant sites located out there. And so federal funds in the project requirements with the NEPA process, there's a certain effort and it's associated when you uncover those findings. This condensed version here is the second report of a... The second report is 450 pages long. I have it if you'd like to read it. The significant findings from that report are condensed down in what I provided you here. So around 2000... December 2012, we submitted a Phase Two archaeological investigation to MHT. MHT responded in March of 2013 and recommended that there's certain portions of our project area that require a Phase Three investigation. Project kind of stalled at that point. At that date, we had invested about $135,000 of money towards just archaeological consultant work. Mind you, it is an 80-20 split. Federal bridge funds to the county and 20% coming locally. So what that means is on a yearly basis, we get about $1 million of federal bridge funds that can be put towards the project, design right away, environmental permitting, and construction. Paul and I decided we perhaps should go down and meet the state highway before we jump into a Phase Three archaeological. We did that in October of 2013. At that point, the meeting concluded and state highway recognized what was going on. We went down there saying, you know what? This project is ballooning. We had the recent design cost estimate. This is the design where it stands now. It's now up to $6.3 million in construction dollars.
That is to give across the creek how wide?
Not as wide as this room.
Yeah.
Yes, again, designed in 50 years.
As it's currently designed, it'll pass a 25-year storm event. So I'll be able to tell you about the significance of the water elevations out there with flooding. When I first was told about how high the water levels are out there with the storm, I had no idea. But then I saw pictures. And it's to the top of telephone poles with a good storm. So at that point, state highway agreed that we could still be eligible for federal bridge funds if we were to reduce the scope of the project. But by reducing the scope of the project and we're designing a bridge that wouldn't pass a 25-year storm event, we're looking at something along the two and five. And that's what we've asked Wilson T. Ballard to take a look at. So they just did very preliminary work to look at for the two and five storm event that looked like. So I wanted to just show you immunographically. Here's the footprint of the project as it currently designed. The second page shows a plan and profile view of the elevation difference of what's going on out there. The bottom part of the sheet shows the bridge passing the 25-year storm event. The existing bridge surface elevation out there is around 448 feet. The bridge as it's currently designed, it'll be 470 feet. Difference of 25 feet. If you go to the third page, now you can start looking at the footprint of an alternative that would handle a two-year design storm. And then the picture after that is for a five-year storm event. And you can see the footprint differences if you were to look at... I've highlighted a couple of things with regard to elevation. Looking at the two-year storm event, the existing bridge surface being at 448, the new bridge surface would be at 452. There's an intersection elevation I've kind of highlighted. So you basically take everything out there that's in pretty much a low land valley. And we have to build roadway approaches up for the crossing. The bridge is of course elevated. And then we have tie-down efforts with Appleway. The other thing that's really influencing perhaps the change here would be the archaeological effort in trying to avoid impacts to those sites. If you look back at this in closer detail, they'll tell you exactly what you can and cannot do at these different sites that are significant. You're allowed to skin three inches of topsoil off before you start filling over them with the new roadway approach. You're only allowed to dig six inches into a certain area if you were to place... If you're putting ditches or squares in for a roadway. So it is a big effort right here. And it's driving the project for sure. So some issues here that I've kind of highlighted on the back of this page here. So I've already mentioned that it was built in 1938. Existing crossing right now floods multiple times a year. It passes less than a two-year storm event. The thing that makes this more challenging than just 15-Mile Creek is the effect that Potomac River has on the crossing. I've done a lot of getting re-familiar with the whole project again this week. And a two-year storm event on the Potomac River has a backwater effect, 2,000 feet upstream onto 15-Mile Creek, which influences the water surface elevation for our crossing. So two-year storm happens about... Has a 50% chance of happening every year. And so if it's not that big of a storm, we generally don't design to something that small, generally. Like I said, the project costs continue to increase. We have a $6.3 million construction estimate as it's currently designed. We know that there's additional archaeological efforts regardless of which way we go to that. I'm unsure of how extensive they're going to be. But with a smaller footprint, you make... There's less impacts. And so I feel certain that those efforts will be less than how it's currently designed with a 25-year storm event. To date, we have $322,000 invested in this job of county money. The crossing doesn't improve. And there's a federal regulation that says that if we do not proceed to construction or right away within a 10-year timeframe from notice to proceed with design which is 2006, the county may be obligated to pay the federal bridge funds back. I'm not sure exactly what that means. If perhaps they take away from our yearly contribution or if in fact we would have to truly pay county money back towards that. The other thing that's worth noting today, you know, Dan and I have spent considerable time here in the last month or two mainly looking at 70-some bridge reports, major bridges. We also have 70 smaller bridges. We have eight county infrastructure we also have to look at and consider when we make a decision on one bridge. Along with drainage issues, road rehab issues, roadside safety issues that we have. All those together. So options. With any project, you have a do not... Do not do anything. Do not replace. Continue to rehab on an as-needed basis out there. Again, I'm not sure if we would be... That $500,000 would be pulled from our yearly allotment if we kind of abandoned the project. I'd have to figure that one out. The latest bridge inspection report is about 15 months old. And it classifies the bridge as serious. I have shown here on the back page, the final page of the 11 by 17, what a detour route looks like for this area. So if you're on the west side of the bridge, it's essentially 35 minutes to get you back out to exit 62 on I-68. I've indicated a red route of two and a green route. The red route would be the one that would be preferable in the wintertime.
Of course, the bypass routes it takes on which no time to... The government's now saying, let's close use that one.
You're right, Dan.
The abandoned railroad bed. And the interesting thing about all the regulations they're putting on us with the historic sites now, when they decided to build a new boat ramp a couple hundred yards from this bridge, the boat ramp they built was flooded within six months after it was completed. They tore out the foundation of a historic building to put in a new parking lot. They didn't have to honor any of the regulations or time last week.
And we did meet with them a couple of years ago, actually one a couple of years ago, and tried to get them to allow us to use that as a current solution. Actually, that was really difficult.
We succeeded in alignment that would... We would utilize the shared... They're shared right away with the roadway and a bike. Without the children. And we would build it and maintain it. The meeting didn't end well. So, you know, just to give you a little bit more insight on the... When we talk about design storm for the bridges, a two-year storm event has a 50% chance of flooding, of happening every year. Five-year has a 20%. 10-year, 10%. 25-year storm event, which we're currently designed to, has a 4% in any given year. So again, reflecting back to where we are, these concepts that show perhaps a revised alignment of a two-year and a five-year. Footprints left. I have construction estimates for these. It is on the back here. I had... We looked at aligning a bridge just downstream of the existing one for both a two-year storm event and a five-year storm event. I also looked at alignments that would basically use the existing alignment for the bridge. The problem with that is the bridge would be out of service for about a year. So you'd be using a detour route while it was under construction for a year if we were to keep the bridge on its current alignment. A two-year downstream alignment, the construction cost is estimated about 1.6. A five-year just downstream, it jumps up to 2.5 million. The wild card is still the environmental impacts with the archaeological sites. Cannot say for certain today what they're going to require us to do with these revised alignments.
We're going to find all kinds of stuff, pull through that bottom.
How many people are, I guess, down in the affected area that live there?
I have to say, there's less than 100 cars a day that cross that bridge.
Less than 100 cars a day? We don't know how many houses, households.
I could do a house.
And if the bridge does flood, is there another way for them to get out? Or is it... That's kind of like the choke point.
If there is another way, like Bill had mentioned.
There's not another official way?
Yeah. The other official way is right here.
Right.
35 minutes.
So that's the... But they wouldn't have to go across whatever we were talking about, the canal?
No.
I don't know.
There is a county maintained way out.
And you said this was rated serious by the... How many other of our bridges are rated serious?
Serious. Of the counties?
That was the only one.
There's a handful in the city of Cumberland that they're working on CSX on. They're in serious condition. Watchin' street. Cumberland Street. They have a street.
And do you know Cumberland receives funds from the federal government for the bridge repair?
Bridge repair funds that come to the county are to be shared.
Be shared.
All right, Adam Ball. It appears to me that staying on course and action here with a larger project is only going to mean a lot more money on the county's shit. Conversely, if we can take a shot at making this structure a lot smaller, it would benefit us all tremendously down the road. Nonetheless, there's still pace of realignment, relocation of the bridge downstream. The two or the five-year storm is going to require some additional environmental assessment. And the store trust is going to have to field any footsides. If this project is done any, then it's an archaeological community to investigate out of the county and charge this project to active citizens of the United States, State of Maryland, and Halle County. Recommendations? You guys think it's a wise move to rescope this project, make it a lot smaller?
Would we be allowed to clean the gravel dam up of the creek that's downstream of this bridge? That's what causes having flooding that bridge now. That creek floods at that bridge when the river's not even flooding that bridge. Years of gravel washing off that bridge. There's a rather significant river dam down there that's being arched. That in your natural, it's a gal naturalism. We build a new bridge and you may see it again flooding again.
Well, I could pursue a permit to clean the stream for sure. But still, the existing crossing, there's something that needs to be done there.
I know there's something that needs to be done there. But if you're going to have to clean the stream downstream, we're going to continue to have the flooding problem.
Modified design proposal for the two or the five-year, what does Wilson T. Ballard believe that they could evaluate this project and get federal and state partners to agree to? The timeframe?
Well, our next step would be if we were to select a redesign alternative then would be to renegotiate a design contract to either the two or five or something in between then. So that'd be our next step.
I don't know, this is handcuffed you for half a dozen years or so. Your preference would be not to do it at all?
It's a tough one. Well, it is. I don't know if... I don't think do nothing is an option. Something has to be done there either we consider and I can... We look at if we can... It's hard to rehab an 80-year-old bridge. I'd have to talk to Wilson T. Ballard. I'd have to talk to the state to see what would be... Is it eligible to rehab what's there? And then what does that get us at the end of the day? I feel that perhaps looking at the two and five-year would be our better options, I think. As to which one at this point, I think I may...
Okay. Tough call. Just a timeframe. Commissioners, if you're okay with us pursuing an alternative design approach for this problem project, which has been on the radar screen for a long, long time, filled with hits and starts as a result of some environmental issues and archaeological issues, what would the timeframe necessarily be getting back to Wilson T. Ballard advancing the proposal back before us in what section like this so that we can also avoid public comment section for the citizens that use this project?
Four to six years? Sitting here listening, it just amazes me. And on a roadblock, someone will put up the stall project in the west corner. You know, and someone really wanted to really blow their horn here. You know, the little business sits right up around the turn here uses as a slave grove and drop for chinores on. Economic impact of that bridge to them is enormous. And as far as it looks to me, like the federal government, state government is just finding every way they can to stop the project.
The archaeological stuff is a little perplexing. They don't have a funding mechanism to go out and do research. So what happens is when we build a building, we did Barton Business Park, we spent half a million dollars, archaeologists were leaded out there. So what happens is they don't have a mechanism for funding. But when we do a project, they make that as part of the cost of the project.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's frustrating.
Yeah. An amount of time wasted on this, eternally.
In my mind, I got... What is the benefit of that?
Not.
Company doing it.
We addressed this four years ago, August. And here we are sitting four years later. For no further longer than it was, except someone's paid a lot of money for a study. And it's no doubt in my mind that four years from now, someone will still be sitting here talking about Phase Three and we need to look into Phase Four of something.
It's very frustrating. I understand where you're coming from. It's... I think perhaps by the end of the... Nothing happens fast. Okay. So I'll be conservative and say by the end of the calendar year, I may have some more information perhaps to your son and make a good recommendation.
Okay, I think we're kind of to the point where we need to stick our nose to ground soon and get this finished to the two or five, to the point where if that's okay with you guys. Because that's significantly less than 25.
I think we can all agree that the 25 is... It's $6.3 million for a couple houses and it's just not easy.
You got a campground in there that has been some time, but we have 300, 400 people in that fairground, in that campground. So you do have to do business. The sad part about it is you got railroad back there.
Does they use now on the flats?
All flats for watching. I could look at... Come back if there's going to be any additional historic studies required with the realignment of the bridge.
Are there? I don't know to what extent, but yes.
Any place in that area. Anywhere along the country.
They...
Well, that area in there, if people realize that was a populated area back when it's now. There's a lot of structures in all that area. And the federal government didn't care if they tore the foundation of what was the original paymaster quarters for the CNN outlet. Tore that up to make the parks.
The one thing that I would say that we have going forth with the revised alignment with regard to the archaeological is when they go out and they do Phase One, they take the entire area and they do testing in certain areas. Just shovel test pits, they're calling. And so they know what they found in the area where we were to change the alignment of the bridge and roadways if it's historically significant, requiring more investigation. This report details that. And it shows areas... It's color-coded. Phase Three recommended here. Phase Two is enough in this location. So there's plenty of information available now. If we were to go back and say, you know what? The footprint is no longer this. It's this. And here's where it is. I don't feel that the effort going forward would be as... Not even close to what we've done to date.
I think what's a disturbing area was 3/4 of an acre on a five-year storm bridge. Point seven.
That's right away acquisition. So that's the other angle in this. So with the project, we have to purchase right away. So environmental impacts with the five-year were 21,000 square feet. And that has just taken a footprint in an area that they've already determined is archaeological. 21,000 square feet.
So it's less than half a...
Yes.
So all this. All this. For less than 200, it's a half acre of ground.
Gentlemen, thank you very, very much. Having an easy assignment. Didn't catch too many arrows.
No, I think our staff's exceptional.
Yeah. And I don't think any of the agencies could review this respective cost that was... Of course, that was ability or whether we're paying somebody back.
You know, if we just had to have these agencies back in the end, if all man was roaming the earth, we'd all still be living in caves and carrying torches. Everything would be fantastic.
You've done it to steady yourself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on to Mr. Cale. Commissioners, at our last public meeting, we had received input from the last two public meetings, citizen input regarding the Berylville water situation last week. We had another observation concerning the election which took place. Houston found out and asked the call, come up with some ideas and present to us in a work session. And here we are with respect to how we might move ahead with respect to that problem.
Yeah, I guess we're here for three reasons. One, you've got people come here and say they didn't know there's still the same amount of good water. The other is if you recall, USDA has changed their requirement on the water company, which could be submitted. So what happened was USDA funding, whatever house you passed, you had to hook up the system. So that's another big change was they have said that water company is a true water company. So the water company will not have to be, I think a significant amount of it did not want the water. The other thing, which can be controversial, if you recall at that meeting, they said the water companies either are all in or all out. So the water company won't be able to, five people out of the 27 or 30, water company people will not be able to connect to the water market. The USDA said they're all in or out. So that's something we need going forward. And the other is, we did underestimate the amount of ballots that were not returned in the upper division. Sunny Side, I think they were supposed to put 50% of ballots weren't returned, so whatever reason. So we kind of underestimated. So it's a good way to maybe try this again. So that's why we're going to try it again. What we're thinking, we would do a public meeting and advertise it as heavily as we could. At the meeting, we would get the owners of the property. And we're doing this to try to explain about the water company issue and while we're doing this again, because we're going to get hit again. If people don't want the water, they're going to pounce on us for coming again. We've got to explain why we're doing this again. So at that meeting, we would hope that the homeowner would come up to save us time and say, I live at this, so we could verify the ownership and they would sign petition for against. And then the ones that we did not get, we would go out in the daytime and try to get it. And then the ones we couldn't get in the daytime, we would go out in the evenings and get it. And if there's people that are far away, we would try to call them and get communication with them. So I guess what our intent is to try to personally talk to every person who lives in that area instead of trying to do the ballot. It's going to take a bit of time, though. I guess it's not something that we ask themselves.
We're already going to run the water line down to the bridge, correct?
Yeah, if you recall, I guess it may be three or three work sessions ago, we had enough votes that we could do the backbone from the end of the existing system down to Route 47, that's along Route 36, so that gives us the backbone. And we're moving forward on that now. We have funding from the state, but it's 50-50 money. We can't make it work financially, so what we're going to have to do is do a calculation on how much money we can take from the state at 50-50. 50-50 meaning 50% grant, 50% loan. And then USDA will fill that gap, so we'll have to kind of do a calculation. We'll have to back off. And USDA, if you recall at the meetings, the pace, they said they're willing to work with some of that. So hopefully, we can make that happen soon. And when USDA planning will be available, we're going to do that calculation here with them. We've already started doing that work. So yeah, we would hope to start that this summer, if the funding's in place. I think that design, Mark, do you know, I think that design is 90% complete. So that's something to move on very quickly once we get the funding. Anyway, originally, we did the ballot because people were concerned that Commissioner Shag wanted the water and his neighbor Commissioner Valentine was mad. But I don't see any way around it, try to do this publicly or beginning, I mean, we are for or you're against it.
Set up a public reading and see how many people give to some or write that down publicly.
Yeah, our intent with that is so we can explain a little bit more of a common front so people do know that it takes the time to come to the meeting again. If we get 27, sort of at 9:30, that's going to reduce the time we have to vote, chase people down. I don't see any way around trying to do this, so I was talking to a director.
Aren't we just going to do like a majority, whoever gets more? What's the...
I'd probably be able to say, when Mount Savage that night, we won 60% when all this took place. And at that point, we probably had 70% of those that attended that was in favor. It was just the 50% that didn't show up.
Or didn't bother.
Or didn't bother to turn a ballot and swung us. My whole point to this is we're already by, we're going to go by Sunny Side. We need to get this Trump line down. We need to get up 47, we need to get to Prince Albert. We need to write by Gerald Bill. Either way, because that's what we discussed this with Denise, our correctional head, was the bypass.
Everything in there and in place in case somebody came over.
Can I make a recommendation, just percentage? I understand, although I would recommend that you let them do the ballot and see what you get. Because if you set an arbitrary number of 60%, you get 59.9, you're already committed, we're not going to give it. Once you see what you get. And it may also be important to know, are the people saying yes or no, people actually live there, or somebody that's an absentee landlord living in Baltimore? I mean, you have some of that data. We can get back where these people live and who visited rental property, owner property. And then you can, you know, get back together and give them the correction based on what you get.
Yes, we did have a couple issues, and it wasn't a ton of them, but we did have a couple issues where it's actually the banker and the property, or a person in the property took personal ones. And that's something we overlooked, because that ballot accounts a no, and knows whether they would have won or not. But there wasn't a lot enough, there wasn't enough of them that would have turned the vote to yes. We may win, I think that might be, we'll get the information and see how it proceeds. The only issue that I would see, hopefully, there's some of those people not trusting of us. And I'm hoping that they'll trust it with myself or our staff who's down there from the public force, that they believe what we, like way around. Well, and that's what we may do too. We may reach out to the community. We did this in the first 20 houses. And actually, I did that myself. We had extra funding from USDA from Mount Savage that we had to spend like within a month. And Dale Clark offered, Mr. Clark, he used to work for the assessment problems, went with me, and I think he helped a lot because people saw him and opened the door. We may reach out to somebody in the community, go around with us, and that might be an idea. I know Lieutenant Morris lives in that area, he's offered, he can find someone. So I think that might help. Because then it won't be an outsider. Of course, that person went, my guess is a yes or a no might influence that way. But I think that might be a try to get that right. All right, so we'll move ahead then, if that's okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, as you recall, we've had a couple of, I guess, high-profile cases that have come back to tarnish the reputation of the fire service. And, you know, we've made a commitment that we're going to address those issues to make sure that those things do not have an opportunity to resurface again. We understand that moving forward, last year, the volunteer fire service required just slightly over $5 million to operate, of which roughly $2 million was provided through government sources. So we know that public trust is important for us to be able to continue to function. One of the endeavors that we took along this line, and let me just say this before I go any further, what we seen publicly was the result of a handful of people. They do not represent the vast majority of the volunteers that are in the fire EMS service. We have dedicated, hardworking people who are just as upset as what happened as what the public is, as what we are sitting here. And certainly, you know, Baltimore Pike's a prime example of how that department has taken hold of things, turned things completely around under some excellent leadership. And, you know, we know we've got departments in our county that are doing it absolutely right and are strong. We know that we have departments who are trying the best they can do with the resources they have. But all in all, we want a system that's accountable to the public and have the confidence of the public. One of the things that we undertook in this endeavor was we released an RFP requesting a study on the financial accountability practices of the various organizations. And in doing so, we were looking for recommended procedures, direction moving forward on how we can begin to implement some strong accountability measures across the board. Mr. Hoover, representing the organization that was awarded that RFP, is here today to release his findings.
All right, thanks, Dick. Well, I am here to present the report of our study of the financial accountability practices of the local volunteer fire and EMS services in Alachita County. A little background, we interviewed each organization, 27 I believe, first with a questionnaire we mailed. They responded, they filled that out and completed it, mailed it back, and then we had an in-person conference with each organization with the applicable people of that organization, treasurer, president, fire chief, whomever they could trust here to, whomever they thought should be there. Obviously, the treasurer had to be there. And some organizations have a financial secretary as well. It's important for me to note that we didn't test anything. So I didn't audit their internal controls. I interviewed them. So I took them for their word. I had no reason to believe that their word is unjust, but I didn't test anything. I didn't look, I didn't watch, I didn't follow, I inquired. I'd like to say, Dick, you're, what I found was I met a lot of good people. There's some very, there's a lot of fine people in these organizations that do some good work. You know, they're willing to walk into a burning fire, burning house and attempt to rescue someone. It's something I don't do. So they should be applauded for that. We're lucky in this area. However, I did find some instances, many instances of poor internal controls within these organizations. And it makes sense, you know, they're small organizations, most of them are pretty small. They want to fight fires and take care of the engines and so on and so forth. And oftentimes, one person, maybe two people are stuck with, I say stuck with, sometimes that's the word that they use, with taking care of the books, if you will. And that's a concern right off the bat to an auditor, because you have a severe lack of sanitation duties when you have one or two people even performing these duties. You can't have one person doing everything in the accounting department. I mean, you can, but there could be problems on the rounds. Unless you're at the Alachita County Department. So, you know, oftentimes, the individual, the treasurer that we'd be talking to, lacked the expertise, lacked the training, has been doing the job for 20 years because that's what they've done, would like to get out of doing it, but there's no one else to do it, so they continue to do it. In the report, there's an appendix, appendix A, which includes our recommendations in an accounting procedures guide. That guide is about 12 or 13 pages long. It details out very specific procedures that I would like to see within each organization, each fire and EMS organization. It's going to take at least three people to implement that within the organizations. Let me stop for a second. There's a few organizations that have pretty good controls. And you're probably talking about the larger fire companies for the most part, because there's more people involved. Maybe not, definitely not what I'm suggesting, but it seems to be working, maybe a tweak here, tweak there. It seems to be working. I'm thinking of one or two that, you know, they've come up with a pretty creative system to prove to the trustees that, you know, everything's probably pretty good in the books. So, you know, I'm not saying that maybe, you know, those organizations, maybe they just need to tweak a little bit what they're doing and not get full board with this, since they do have a system and they have more than three people involved with their books. So that's something that would, you know, could be looked at. But for the most part, I'd like to see this implemented across the board. Again, it's about 13 pages long, pretty detailed, a lot of reading. And again, it's going to take more than one person to take care of these books. Also made a recommendation of a common software platform. Many, or, eh, not many, several at least, organizations are still using manual books, you know, the old ledger sheets. Makes those tax accountants cringe this time of year. So, you know, in this day and age, everyone needs to be at least using the software, QuickBooks software, very simple to use. Some people's going to need some, they're going to need some training now to do it. And that leads me to my next suggestion in the guide, training programs as far as QuickBooks, accounting procedures, you know, maybe even some CP, like we call CP, but fraud CP, what to look for within your organization. Not, you know, I'm not pointing my fingers at anyone, but, you know, it doesn't hurt to know what the red flags are. And then the final recommendation in the report would be the financial reporting, suggested financial reporting to the trustees slash membership, and also to the county. I think the county needs to be, should receive some financial reports, quarterly and annual reports from these organizations. And if everyone's using the same software, these reports should pretty much line up with one another. They could use the same chart of accounts, that could be implemented. And, you know, so you could get a feel for how each organization's doing and each organization's doing against one another a little bit. So I think that would be important to do as well. Now, having said that, implementation of these procedures in 13, 14 pages long, it's going to be difficult for most organizations, I'll be honest with you. Because it's going to take more than one person, it's going to take at least three people to be dedicated to handling books of each fire company or EMS organization. I know myself, I've sat as treasurer for some small organizations, law fire companies. That would be very difficult at some of the organizations that I've been affiliated with, just because of the size of your organization, number of people. Thank goodness, they want to coach or they want to run fire calls, but they don't want to take care of the books. But it's important that we take care of these funds, the public's funds. So something has to be done to address it. So my suggestion is to try to implement this, but again, some organizations, I fear that it's going to be quite a task to do. Now, I boiled it down as easy, as simple as I can for an accounting department. You know, it's a small organization, but you're still dealing with cash and checks and disbursements, sometimes payroll. You know, it doesn't matter if you have, if your budget's $100,000 or $1 million, sometimes it takes just about the same number of people to take care of that money correctly, so that you know your financial reports are correct. And not one person is, you know, not one person's doing everything.
This is the first rollout of this report?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When do we have the emergency services board scheduled to hear this presentation?
We don't have it on the schedule yet, and we'll probably reconvene a special session this coming month.
It's coming month. Emergency Services Board voted this idea by the previous board of county commissioners. We acted upon that.
After the parliament, money was appropriated from selected at this point in time, like commissioners, I think would be appropriate for the emergency services board, also get this presentation, digest it, and provide us with some feedback at some point in time, earliest opportunity. But Jason, I know sitting over here like a quart of spring, and there's a recommendation that he would like to advance for everybody to be aware of, it might be an opportunity for us to invest a small amount of money to, to support an effort on behalf of some of the organizations who, down the road, may choose to volunteer to do this, and us to use those, those efforts as a model for other organizations to follow. Any comments?
Rick Conant, as we worked through the report, Rick also has a floor of inquiry for the report about the option of outsourcing. So for some of these smaller organizations, outsourcing might be a really good avenue for them to pursue. They can, they can use an existing accountant somewhere and have them do the books for them and assist them in doing it, so it could be a two-part process. Built in some controls along the way, built in a lot of controls along the way. Cost may be reasonable. I would recommend to the commissioners that we get a set of volunteers from these fire companies to buy into this and try it out. Maybe we ought to try some funds, funds in next year's budget to assist them in doing that. I think it's a good protection for us. There are, there are public dollars, there's the taxpayer dollars will help us protect ourselves. I think we need to run that through the fire department first, obviously, we'll discuss it with them, but from what Rick's saying about, you know, some of the organizations with members doing it for twenty years, they may jump at this opportunity to get some help.
And what that does then, it would take the number of people required to be involved in it, waters that down even more to, you know, maybe one, and as long as they have someone else handling, handling the books and reporting to, you know, can help, help with the reports to the county, and even to the membership, and can, you know, do the reconciliations that aren't being done now. I think that, that is a viable option, I believe.
One of the things that I'd just like to chime in here at the end is, representing a small volunteer fire company, we're in that situation where we've had a long-term treasurer, and I would trust that man with my life. He is treasurer because he drew the short stick and he's stepped up and he's doing it. And, you know, with, with that being said, ours lead would be the first one to throw their hat and ring to be able to get some assistance with the outsourcing. And I feel confident that, that we would have a number of volunteer companies that would step up and look for that assistance. The issue that we run into, as Jason has alluded to, was the cost to be able to cover that service. Financial support from the commissioners could certainly help shore that up and make this a reality.
Possibly one thing we look at, and funds have been cut a little bit this year, but we've seen growth in the funds that we did from Rock to Gab, were dedicating to the volunteer fire companies. That could be a source, you know, of funding to help us. It would have to go through their commissions, it could be charged up.
Yeah, on the next round of the local development council, we can talk about it, maybe.
We'd almost have to come up with some sort of an estimate, something, yeah, probably to be vested with fund running firms, you know, a single firm that would make a bid to do for all the fire companies or something like that. So we'd have some sort of an idea of what, what that cost is going to be. And then this is going to have to be purely a volunteer program, because they're all private LLCs, not something that we can force on a fire company.
But what I, with that, commissioners, I think what you'll find though is, is that the fire services committed, the fire EMS services committed to, to addressing this problem. And, you know, I think you, you'll see support coming from them, saying that we're willing, we need a little bit of help, but we're willing.
Maybe in the answer, maybe not, I'm not sure, but I, I was under the impression that if you outsourced to an accounting firm, a separate accounting firm would then have to do the audits. Is that?
Well, yes, today, that and that has just recently changed.
That's it.
There's been.
And is that a federal?
Well, it's, it's a standard that the CPAs have to follow. In fact, we just had that situation. You know, only a non, only a few have an audit. Not all the fire and EMS system services have an audit. A minority have an audit, only the ones that are tax and district, maybe half a dozen, Jason.
There are six that have audits.
Six that have audits. You know, so, and, and so, yeah, they would need, if they chose to do the outsourcing as well, as well, then they would have to have someone else do their financial audit. Which, you know, I don't know how the audit's been going for client A, but, you know, if there's a firm involved in books, taking care of the accounting work, the books should be pretty good, so the audit should get pretty smooth. But, you know, looking back, the outsourcing of this and the outs, but I know the outsourcing, the outsourcing would probably caught some of the stuff that was going on before the debit card stuff, and, you know, and going through the bank statement, you know, no one was looking at the bank statement. Or here, yeah, someone looking at the bank statement, reconciling the bank statement on a monthly, on a monthly basis. And that stuff would have been caught, would have been questioned, and, you know, whatever would happen. You know, again, like Dick said, there's, I guess the fire companies are walking around a little bit of a black eye because of a few, you know, that's a shame. My profession had the same issue about, you know, it's eight years ago. It's nothing they can't weather. They just need to stop the breeding and get past it and fix it and then move on.
Commissioners, any more questions? Comments?
Have we looked at any of the bingo and gambling money?
Again, I didn't look at anything.
Right.
I inquired. And in those inquiries, you know, the ones that had bingo, we would, we would talk about bingo, and that's how that's handled. And, you know, if they have, a lot of them have, you know, the chicken fries and, and what have you, but we would absolutely talk about their thought, these are correct.
Does this, these recommendations address those issues? I was.
This would address, this would address any receipt and any dispersment. Yes.
Okay. For the benefit of the radio station and the newspaper here, we do have a handful of volunteer members here. I see Chief Dugan from Gloucester. Who else do we have here today?
Dan.
Dan Smalley, Old Town. Chief, Shat.
Mm-hmm.
Lobeal.
District sixteen.
Malcolm. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today. Really thank you very much. You're welcome, sir.
And the report will be available online.
One more.
One more. Range from police, fire, EMS, and the reason behind the system is to allow for interoperability. We began to install that system back, I believe it was 2004. We probably invested probably close to two million dollars into that, but out of that, only five hundred thousand dollars was actually allocated by the county. At the same time, we recognized that sooner rather than later, we were going to see the migration of one of Governor O'Malley's core projects, which was a statewide radio system in the 700 megahertz range. And we knew ultimately it would reach its way to Western Maryland, but in original phases, we were identified as being the last recipients of that system. We didn't have a window to be able to wait for that system to arrive to Allegheny County before we needed to begin replacing equipment. So we put in place this system in 2004 to bridge the gap until the 700 system would reach Western Maryland. With that, the five hundred thousand dollars that the commissioners allocated, they purchased the core of the system. And the core of the system were switches that allowed all of our tower sites to be able to communicate with one another and allowed that information to get back into the dispatch center. Out of that, I believe, ten sites, Roger?
Thirty, yeah.
Yeah. So with all these switches out there, that allows, for example, Western Port to be able to communicate with the dispatch center, but really provide, would provide Western Port the ability to communicate countywide because of these switches. Approximately two months ago, we became aware that Motorola, a large national vendor, and also the vendor that's installing the statewide system, purchased a company called Trident Systems. Trident Systems was the manufacturer of our radio switch. Two months ago, we were told that we probably wouldn't see any changes, that, you know, it was business as normal up until about two weeks ago, when we were told that Motorola was shutting Trident down. They purchased them and shut them down. With that, we were given a notice that parts for our switches would only be available till March thirteenth, and that support on our switches was going to end on December thirty-first. And from that perspective, that puts us in a critical phase, because after December thirty-first, if we are unable to resolve an issue on our own, then potentially it puts a site out of service permanently. We did make an inquiry about whether they would allow us to have the software that they use to program these switches. And initially, we, there was an indication that would not, but they're still weighing that option. Bottom line is, is now we're, we're put in an awkward situation here with our public safety communication system. However, with that being said, one of the things that did happen that sort of helped us out was that the state about six months ago flip-flopped us in Southern Maryland on the build-out of the 700 megahertz radio system. So we know that the 700 system is coming to Western Maryland. We believe that by summer 2016, the components of that system are going to begin to be installed. We initially expressed some concern about, you know, where this project fell and the governor's funding proposal and such, and we've been told that the equipment for Western Maryland has already been purchased and it's staged right now, that there's no indication that funding would not be available to continue the build-out. That brings the infrastructure to Allegheny County for the 700 system. What it doesn't bring is the subscriber units, the mobiles, the portable radios, alerting capability to be able to functional in that system. So what did, the original plan was, is that over the course of a handful of years, we'd utilize grant funds and such to phase in and gradually begin to shift our agencies over, starting with our law enforcement folks, get them moved over to the state system. And I will say, the state system is a robust system. It is state-of-the-art digital technology, and, you know, from a public safety perspective, it is absolutely a first-class arrangement. However, with that being said, now we're taxed with a difficult situation of being forced to migrate sooner rather than later, and with the thought that failure for us to do the migration could potentially give us catastrophic consequences. We have been working with our state partners who are very, very supportive of trying to help us make this, this migration happen. They've already scheduled some power work to be done in their area to improve coverage, which is, you know, very much appreciated. Bottom line is, it's going to come down to dollars. And we're, we're two weeks out on this, so we don't have a firm feel right now of what we're talking about, as far as what it's going to cost. We believe the alerting component is going to run us somewhere around half a million We know that in order to accommodate this, we were scheduled this year, this was the year coming up where we'd make the migration to new radio consoles. We'd scheduled that five years ago, and that's going to be, that was like a million and a half dollar project in itself. And when it comes down to portables and mobile radios, we're still in that, that pricing phase, but portable radios, we could be looking at two thousand to three thousand dollars a pop. Mobile radios could set us back as high as five thousand dollars a piece. It's very, very expensive technology compared to what we've been riding up to this point. I will say that from a safety perspective, I believe that it certainly does improve provider safety, but with that being said, we have to figure out how we can bridge that financial gap. And certainly, you know, whether it be through the capital program, whether we reach out to the state partners, to the governor to look for assistance, you know, those are all certainly options for us. We're exploring the option of at some point doing a regional grant through the Assistance of Firefighters Grant, but at best, that grant would not open until probably December or January of that year, and may not even be awarded by the time that we need to make the migration. There's a lot of variables, and I wish I could bring you definites to the table right now, but only being two weeks out, we're still in that process of trying to calculate and figure what this, what the actual cost impact is going to be to us.
Dick, what are your counterparts across the state going to say right now? How are they reacting?
Well, I understand most of our counterparts across the state have already made the migration to the 700, so it was just Southern Maryland and Western Maryland. Now, Washington County will be bridging to the 700 megahertz system only because they invested twenty-five million dollars of their own money and built their own system. So, but for Allegheny, and probably more importantly for Garrett, the terrain up here is extremely difficult for radio coverage. Thus, when you look at Eastern Shore, and they can install a handful of sites and get countywide coverage. And Roger, you said we're thirteen right now, trying to provide coverage up here on this system.
Would any of our existing equipment be compatible, such as, nothing could be reprogrammed, so our system is obsolete?
Motorola purchased it and shut it down as soon as that technical support ceases?
Yeah.
That's the end. So it's a matter of trying to keep us alive long enough to, to be able to make it, move over.
Commissioners, I might volunteer that we reach out to the delegation, ask them our dilemma, solicit their support, approach the governor's office. If you don't mind, I, Dick and I can make that phone call tomorrow morning, see if we can schedule a briefing with our members as soon as possible, bring them up to speed on the issues. Between now and kind of the, wanting that beaten up, I need you and Phil to give us some detailed numbers, their respective amount of equipment that they, and our cost estimates. Questions, commissioners?
Well, you know what, you can get it for Christmas this year, Mr. Rod.
It'll be certainly more than you got me last year for Christmas.
The radio. Good thing about that, cost is not an issue. See, yes, Mr. Rod.
There you go. The work, yes, the work. Your observations?
No, sir, it's all, all down to money, Rick, at this point.
Yes, it is. All right, Mitch, that's all we have for you for this session. We'll see you five o'clock. One more minute.
Radio.